What? Good evening with any of you that are watching. That this is a workshop with the Cumberland Planning Board. We'll reintroduce, we have two new members, Bob Layton and Stacy Daigle.
LeBlanc.
LeBlanc.
What?
LeBlanc.
LeBlanc, I want, sorry about that.
Sorry.
So anyway, we're, and so the purpose of this is to meet with our town attorney to give us training on what we can and can't do as far as planning board members are concerned. And actually, it's probably for anybody watching, it's a good education for all of you to see what our limitations are and what we can and can't do. So from that, I will turn it over to Ben McCall from Jensen Baird.
Thank you for the wonderful introduction. This is, weirdly enough, the first time I've been in front of this board. I've talked to Bridget, I feel like at least two or three times a week at this point, but I feel like that's probably a good sign, things are going smoothly on your end, and so there's no need.
I'm knocking on wood.
I know, I've got some wood over here, too. This is a training in two parts, and I'll explain both the parts as we go along. This is a training that we do across the state for all of our municipal planning boards and zoning boards. But like I said, I'm going to cover two large topics tonight and try and do it in the next 45 minutes or so to maybe 50 minutes to give you plenty of time to ask questions. And feel free to interrupt me along the way if I'm not being clear or you have a question pop up. The first topic I'm going to be touching upon tonight is the Freedom of Access Act. And you have a couple of new members, and whether you knew it or not, state law actually requires every new planning board member to receive Freedom of Access Act training within 120 days of being sworn in. And for those of you who haven't received, aha, and I see some wonderful looks around the room. This is the same for members of the town council, this is the same for new code enforcement officers. It's really just a primer on public records, public proceedings, the do's and don'ts of all of that. In the second part of the training, we're going to be talking about administrative decision-making, which essentially is what, as your chair already explained, what does the planning board have the authority to do? But more importantly, what is the proper way to go through the process of making a decision when you have an application in front of you? And what are the pitfalls that planning boards often fall into? So like I said, no discussion of pending applications is my first rule. I feel like that probably goes without saying, and so we can certainly talk about hypothetical situations, but even though I'm not 100% up on everything that's in front of you, we're obviously going to talk in hypotheticals, we're not going to be talking about applications that are currently in front of you. Obviously, feel free to ask questions as we go along, but I will try and pause or leave enough time at the end if you have all of these questions racked in your brain. So with the Freedom of Access Act, the first thing to keep in mind frankly is how broad it is. I haven't put the purpose statement of the act here, but it's worth keeping in mind that most, if not every, state in the country has a version of this type of law. On a federal level, you may have heard it referred to as FOIA, the Freedom of Information Act. It's the same principle here at the state level. It's essentially a law that is intended to make sure that members of the public are able to access information that's being used by their governments at a local and state level, that's being used to inform decisions that affect them. And at a broad level, the Freedom of Access Act is meant to be interpreted as broadly as possible. And so my general rule of thumb with FOIA is if an action is getting in the way of the public having access to all the information that's in front of you as a planning board, all the information that town staff has at its disposal, if you think that something's getting in the way of that, FOIA probably prohibits it. There, of course, are exceptions as we go along. But the first major subtopic under FOIA is public records. And this is meant to be as broad as the summation here entails. Any document that's held by the town or its officials, that includes every member of the planning board, every member of the town council, every member of the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, every other board and committee, or employees, which involves government business. So obviously, if you have a receipt for lunch that day, even if you're a planning board member, that's not a public record. If it's an email that involves something for your kid's school, something involving your own personal home, not a public record. But if you take those out of it, if you or a member of town staff are in possession of a document that pertains to government business, that is something that a member of the public who's not on the planning board can come and request. There are 300 or so statutory exceptions to this rule, and so as you can imagine, part of our jobs on a pretty regular basis is to work with officials here in Cumberland and elsewhere to determine whether something that is being requested is a document within the scope of FOIA and something that actually can and should be released. But those exceptions, like I mentioned before, are narrowly construed. They are meant to, everything, the tie goes to release, I guess is the point I should make, that the tie goes to public disclosure of these things. And like I said, there are exceptions to this rule, but none, as far as I'm aware, would apply to any document that the planning board is holding. This is the important thing I want to point out, though. Emails are included, and this probably goes without saying, in 2025, emails are just as much a record as anything that's printed out on paper. But a lot of times, planning board members or other board members will think that, well, I use a private email address to get information from the town of Cumberland about my role as a planning board member. Surely, my private email address has to be off limits to people. Well, the answer is no. If there are public documents, meaning public communications, even if they're asking, even if it's Bridget or Christina asking whether you can attend a meeting on a particular date, no matter what email address that email is hiding out in, it still remains a public record. And so the practice pointer on that to keep in mind is if, and I don't remember off the top of my head whether planning board member, do you have town of Cumberland email addresses?
We do.
Which is good.
And I think mentioning that, that I think the practice has been to utilize that and just use it exclusively for the stuff going back and forth.
And that's always the best practice, and Cumberland is fortunate to have that capability. Many towns do not, and that ends up being more of an issue, as you can imagine, is that intermingling of documents. The thing, the only, you know, the only pointer I'd add to that is, you know, no matter how benign, you shouldn't be deleting emails from that public account. In theory, they could be retrieved even if they're deleted later on, but it's usually easier in the long run to just keep it there. If the town's running out of server space or something to that effect, then we can obviously help you with that.
Yeah, excuse me.
Yes.
Do you, when you say that, do you mean communications, say, from Bridget to us, Christina to us? Because we get other communications that, you know, I always delete practically, but you know, things from, oh, wow.
Town training.
Town training, and yeah, mostly it's training, training stuff.
You know, I think, I'll defer to what the town does in terms of policies there. As a practical matter, although it'd be hard to envision exactly why or when somebody would want those type of documents, the fact remains is that, you know, intent isn't really the practical matter there. And so as long as the town can retrieve those, even if they've been deleted, that's, you know, in order to comply with the law from a black letter standpoint, they just need to be retrievable.
But they're almost like junk mail.
Yep, I, yeah, I know, and that's the practical reality and the practical challenge of all of that is, let's say, this is a real world situation, let's say that somebody is interested in what training, if any, members of the planning board have gotten from Maine Municipal Association or something to that effect, and they want to look at emails that you may have received from MMA or something like that. That's not an unheard of request. As perplexing as it may be, I'll sort of leave the answer to the question open, except, you know, what I will say, of course, is that in theory, the town needs to be able to comply, you know, with those requests, one way or the other.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
So deleting it from your inbox just puts it in your trash. So as long as you're not emptying your trash can, you know?
You know.
That's really, the problem is when you're searching in your inbox for some previous correspondence and you have to go through 100 emails about training, you know, that's, I think, why we're.
Yeah.
I don't permanently delete them, but I do get them out of my inbox so that it's not like.
Yeah, the only, not to go down the rabbit hole all too much, but you know, in theory, if those are being automatically deleted from your trash, which a lot of times there's a protocol that will clean things out periodically, you know, like I said, I don't anticipate this being, you know, in the case of just alerts about trainings or things like that, the pertinence of those is certainly lower. Doesn't necessarily take them out of the context of a public record, though, and that's the challenge. It's an IT challenge as opposed to anything else.
Well, and just to make a suggestion, you can create a folder in your inbox that's just like junk, and just put everything over there, and then when you search your inbox, those won't come up.
Because, I mean, I started my email today, I opened it, and I had seven emails, and four of them said spam. I automatically, I'm meticulous about email, I got rid of four spam emails, like delete them right away.
Yeah, so the one caveat I'll put on all of that, keep in mind, and you know, sometimes this is in the eye of the beholder, but sometimes there will be a true spam email. If it doesn't pertain to public business, then it's not a public record. So if it's, you know, if it's truly someone trying to sell you something and, you know, to your town of Cumberland email address, I think it's probably safe to delete those.
Okay.
Even the ones, though, that are talking about agendas, they're talking about all of that, I mean, you ultimately are going to have to be the one that uses your common sense on these sorts of things, but yeah, if the email truly doesn't concern anything that you're doing on the planning board, anything to do with the town of Cumberland, then I think it's safe to delete that one.
It's all in the cloud anyways, you can't get rid of it.
It's true. It's very true. So this is just a little bit of background. Luckily for all of you, this won't be anything that you are dealing with personally, but I want to remind you of just how requests for public records work. It could be the case that in the past, if you're on this planning board, or in the future, some member of the public is going to email you directly, and they are going to ask for you to provide them with, I want a copy of all of these things. The important thing to keep in mind is you should not be individually fulfilling requests for public records. The town has, is it Jen, or, yeah, it's Jen. So Jen Doten, the town clerk, is your public access officer, and every town in Maine has to have one designated. And if I'm wrong about the identity, then we can find out who it is. I'm pretty sure it is Jen. And the point of having a public access officer is if any member of town staff or town boards receives what is in effect a request for public records, those requests have to be dealt with on a timely basis, they have to be done correctly, and they have to be done centrally to make sure that everybody is giving the same answer. And so if you, as a member of the planning board, receive a request, you can either check in with Bridget to see exactly what you should do, or it can be emailed directly to Jen Doten, and she will handle it on behalf of the town. But just for your clarification, there is no special form to request public records. A simple email saying, I would like copies of X, Y, and Z, is all that's needed. Or it could be verbal. It's a misnomer that some people have, that there is an official request form, and that if it's, request isn't on that form, that it's an invalid request. It's not true. The town can charge a fee, it can't exceed 10 cents a page for printed material. Of course, in today's day and age, most of the time, we're fulfilling these requests digitally with scans, and we're not charging for those. The town can charge for staff time, the first two hours have to be free, but after that, the town can charge $25 an hour for any time that's spent in compiling the records that are responsive to a request. The reason why it's important that all these requests go to the, to go to Jen or another member of town staff is by law, the town has to acknowledge receipt of a request within five days, and if there are going to be any bases for denial of that request, those also have to be stated within five days. Then there's a reasonable amount of time, and that is what the statute says, and that's always open to interpretation, a reasonable amount of time for the town to comply with that request and turn over whatever records are being requested. And there are a couple other provisos at the bottom that if you're very interested in, I'm happy to talk about at the end of the presentation.
So one question on that, you said timely, and it sounds like five days, but I'm not actively looking at my email on a daily basis from the town of Cumberland?
Yep.
This is my only role here.
Yep.
If I get a request and I'm gone, and I don't respond in five days, is that, I mean, is that something I'm expected to pay attention to?
No, I mean, I think in a practical matter, nearly all of the time, these requests are going to go to a member of town staff. It's extremely rare. I think the biggest takeaway in this area is if for some reason you, or it may be that the entire planning board as a group receives the same request, those requests need to be forwarded to the town staff for reply rather than you attempting to handle it on your own.
Yeah, my experience on the school board, when we went through those three years of kind of craziness, the, all of those requests went to the superintendent's office, and we actually spent in one year $50,000 in legal fees answering it, but that was kind of during the crazy period. I don't think in my other three times on the planning board that it might have happened once, but I think it more happens with the town council and especially the school.
Okay. I was just going to say, what if somebody buttonholes you on the street, say, and says, you know, they know you're on the planning board, and they say, I really want to see the approval that was given for that development or whatever, then I would direct them to the PA.
Right. I agree. I think if you get buttonholed in the street or in Hanaford or anywhere like that, the message needs to be absolutely contact the town, the town will process that request. It may be worth it at that point. You know, if it's a weekend, you get to a Monday, send an email to the town also saying, just so you know, I had this conversation at Hanaford, this is what the request was. Hopefully, if push comes to shove, that is technically a request to the town that you received at Hanaford. I think 99 times out of 100, and I'm going to knock on wood when I say this, if it's a request and someone truly wants those documents, they will understand when you tell them that you personally are not in possession of those records, the town of Cumberland may, and their best, the best recourse is to go and ask town staff, and they'll work through it that way. Public proceedings, so that's public records. The Freedom of Access Act is really broken down into two, and this is the section that really is more pertinent to the planning board and other boards. So public proceedings, the concept is quite simple. If you're going to be conducting public business, the public needs to be able to attend, and the public needs to be able to participate in certain circumstances. So the rule is quite simple, if a majority of the board, so four people, are together or corresponding about town business, that constitutes a public meeting. Now, most of the time, you're sitting here in a room, this meeting was noticed to the public, the public is able to attend, even though I'm disappointed nobody wanted to come and listen, you've complied with the Freedom of Access Act as it pertains to this particular workshop. The problem arises, and I have no reason to believe this happens in Cumberland, it happens unfortunately far too often, is over email, it always seems to be email, or perhaps it's an instant messaging service, perhaps it's some other form of communication. A few board members constituting a quorum, unfortunately, start talking about the ins and outs of a particular application. It's not talking about, can you make this board meeting on this date? It's not even talking about, when can we have a site walk for this application? It's saying, hey, you know, I did a drive-by of this property, I'm really interested in this, we should talk about this at the next meeting, or can you believe what this person said, you know, at the podium at the last meeting? What you've done unwittingly, what you've done unwittingly, is create a public meeting. And when that happens, it needs to be properly noticed, and the public needs to be able to attend. And when that happens, if it does happen, it can be grounds for reversal of whatever decision you may have, if people believe that you are creating bias or other issues that we'll talk about a little bit later. Or on top of that, you may have violated the Freedom of Access Act on behalf of the town by having an unnoticed public meeting. So keep in mind, and I'm sure this happens already, it is fine, it is not a violation of FOIA for there to be a board-wide email from someone on town staff saying, we're having a meeting on this date, are you available? Certain, you know, basically a roll call, not a problem. Talking about the merits of any particular application, not okay. Certainly, email can be used to distribute meeting materials ahead of time, even proposed findings of fact that the board needs to, you know, to consider and then adopt at a future meeting, that's okay over email, but substantive discussion can't happen. If it needs to, if there are reasons why a meeting can't happen in person, the town does have, it has adopted a remote meeting policy that can be used in a pinch, if folks need to meet by Zoom, but that's a completely different topic of discussion. So for our purposes, talk about applications in this room, or on a site walk if it's been particularly noticed, don't talk about them outside. So like I've said, public notice is required for public meetings. Technically speaking, state law doesn't give a minimum amount of time that a meeting needs to be noticed. My rule of thumb is usually always a week at a minimum, but there is a provision that if you have an emergency for some reason, you can meet on an emergency basis. What we typically advise at that point is that notice be given to the paper and TV stations and all of that. You do very important work here, obviously, it's usually in the context of a council meeting or something that needs to happen immediately in that case. Let's talk a little bit also about when members of the public are allowed to speak. That is a different subject from when they're allowed to attend. Public members are always allowed to attend your meetings, that is the nature of a public meeting. This is perhaps a distinction without a difference in Cumberland because nearly all of the matters that you will consider, site plans, subdivisions, those things, they all require under your Code of Ordinances a public hearing to be conducted. Public hearing is when the members of the public must be given an opportunity to speak. This is contrasted with a public comment period, which often happens at council meetings and other places. You are allowed to, you could let people speak ad nauseam. It may make your meetings run a little bit long, but at the end of the day, that's up to the board to decide. It's a public hearing context that you must allow people to speak. And the same rules apply to site walks, I think I mentioned that already. They need to be publicly noticed, public needs to be allowed to attend. I always tend to suggest that site walks are meant to, really to allow people to use their eyes to see a site and the context around it. And it always gets a little bit difficult, especially with a larger group, of making sure that if there are substantive questions that either a butters have or the board has for the applicant or their engineer, it's always tricky to make sure that those questions are properly answered and everybody has the opportunity to hear at a site walk. If you can, my suggestion is always to try and save questions and comments and all of that for when you are back here in this room in order to allow everybody the benefit of those conversations, but of course, you have honed your practice over time.
A question on that, I've, kind of in my practice over the last couple years as chair, is that when we have public comment, a lot of times, there are questions, and what I have been doing, which seems to have worked pretty well, is have, most of the cases, they're technical things, so that I have had a peer engineer there rather than going, like you say, going down rabbit holes, that we get these questions and concerns answered during the public comment period, and that's okay, isn't it?
Certainly.
Okay.
Yep. The one trick on public hearings as opposed to public comment sections, this is, I think, the one, the one area where precision is most important, is I always suggest, if you're not doing this already, and if you are, like I said, I've had the, you know, for all the best reasons, haven't had the opportunity or the need to be directly involved in your meetings yet, but once a public, once a public hearing has concluded, meaning you feel like you've reached the natural end of where everybody in the room, everybody who's involved has said their piece, I always think it's the best practice to close that public hearing deliberately. I don't think there needs to be a vote necessarily, but the chair can state on the record that the public hearing is closed. The caveat to that is you can, in theory, ask direct questions of the applicant after that point, but if anybody truly needs to be presenting additional evidence, additional surveys, additional anything, that public hearing needs to be reopened. And when that has happened, you need to provide everybody the opportunity, you know, the opportunity to speak again, and the public hearing needs to be re-noticed if it's going to be happening at a subsequent meeting, so.
Yeah, our general thing here is that a lot of times, when there is something that's really complicated, that we'll say, okay, I am going to formally close the public hearing, but should something come up and everything, I do exercise the thing of reopening, and it probably happens, probably once every four months or something.
If that's happening on the same night, the same night that it's been noticed for, I think that's perfectly fine. I think technically speaking, if, you know, if you get to your deliberations and you think, well, we really need this, all this additional information to come in, you're going to need to re-notice the public hearing for the next night, the next meeting, that's not a particularly difficult ordeal, but it should happen because, you know, the, sort of the line in our practice group has always, has always been, is that, you know, you are put on notice that if you have concerns about this application, that's your night, that's your time to show up, and if you don't show up, then it's assumed that your concerns have either been met or you don't have any. But if the board is going to be considering additional information that perhaps obviously wasn't available to anybody at the initial public hearing date, it's only fair to make sure that members of the public especially have the opportunity to look at your peer-reviewed submission or a change to the plan or anything like that, so. Executive sessions, I won't spend much time on this at all, these are the exceptions to public meetings. There are a number of situations in state statute that you can have an executive session. One of them is school board suspensions, or, well, suspensions that are appealed to the school board, purchase and sale of real estate, employment discussions, labor contracts. This is the one, in theory, where the planning board could be involved, legal rights and responsibilities, if you're discussing it with legal counsel. So perhaps there's been an appeal of one of your decisions, it's gone to superior court through the court process, and the court has remanded it to the planning board for further findings or further discussion. That may be a situation where I'll be here to sort of summarize what the court had found and give you instructions of what needs to be done at that case. That's really the only context where an executive session would be involved, but those are a couple other situations in case they are of interest. This is never an issue, but technically speaking, there needs to be a motion to go into an executive session, you need a three-fifths vote of the board. I frankly have never seen anything other than unanimous vote, but that's the rule. Discussion has to be limited to the items that you've identified in the motion, so you can't just say, we're going into executive session and then be able to discuss willy-nilly whatever you would like. Of course, there is no vote or formal Of course, there is no vote or formal action that's permitted in an executive session. So executive sessions are for discussions. And regardless of the content of that discussion, if you need to have a vote afterwards, so it may be in your context to approve or deny an application, that vote happens in public session after you've come out of the executive session. That's also the case for the council or any other board of the town that would have reason to go into an executive session. Sort of harkening back to public records that we just talked about. If there are records that, in this context, I have provided to the board specifically for that executive session, so say a written summary of the court case that's been remanded to you, that document is not a public record. So it would be protected from disclosure if need be. It's all within the spirit of the rule. So that is FOA. I have now fulfilled your legal responsibilities for being trained in this, for everybody who's on this board. And with the rest of the time here, I want to talk more specifically about administrative decision-making and sort of the role of planning boards in municipal government. And so we'll be talking a lot about a lot of different subjects. And so if you have questions, again, please feel free to interrupt. Section 30-4 of your code sets out the general jurisdiction of the planning board. You are supposed to, every five years, be involved. And this is fortuitous because I'll be here again on Thursday to train the Comprehensive Plan Committee on Freedom of Access Act. And so every five years, in theory, the planning board can and should be involved, at least in the discussion and redrafting of the comp plan. As you know, you are directly involved in subdivision review. That is a state requirement. Believe it or not, there are towns out there that have no planning boards. In that case, the municipal officers, their select board, I actually represent one of these towns in far western Maine. Their select board will review every subdivision, which is usually one subdivision about every 20 years. There is no requirement beyond that that you have a municipal planning board, although it is the normal practice across the state. As you know, or maybe don't, under your code, you're also required to undertake certain levels of site plan review. There's also staff review in certain contexts for smaller projects. You are also meant to study and submit proposed changes to subdivision and zoning ordinances. And we'll talk a little bit in a bit about the difference between quasi-judicial decision-making and legislative decision-making and why that matters. You're also in charge of street names.
Except we're not.
Well, it says it still.
It says it still until we, until we town council takes action. But there's another part in our ordinance that gives that authority to the assessor.
Yeah.
So it's.
So you got an inconsistency in your code, at least in 30-4. And I'm glad that Bridget's already found this. This is not a surprise to me that she has, but that's what that says. And you can't fault a guy, I guess, for going off what's printed. And then here is a real nice laundry list of other specific uses, all of which are going to come to you under site plan review anyway. But I'm always curious to see what codes lay out for planning boards. And so here we go, very quickly. Aquifer protection uses, certain agricultural activities, multiplex developments, which makes sense, you would see them in a site plan context and a subdivision context as well, extraction of earth and materials, farm-based special events, garden apartments, mobile home parks, private airports and heliports, that would be interesting, water extraction and storage, residential care facilities, telecommunications facilities, and determining greatest practical extent in the context of a nog and forming structure in a shoreline zoning context. So those are all the contexts in which you could make a decision. And just for your own edification, anybody who wants to appeal one of your decisions has one of two options depending on the context. In either case, they must file their appeals within 30 days of the date of your decision. If it is from a site plan or a subdivision decision, it goes directly to Superior Court, which is really nice if you're the town attorney, because it avoids having to have an intermediate step at the town level. But if it's a shoreline zoning permit, it will go to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. And it performs what's called an appellate review, which means it's not making its own decision. It is simply reviewing the record that was developed here at the planning board level and then deciding whether or not you made a correct legal and factual decision based on that. So here's the nitty-gritty about making decisions. And this is really what we like to focus on in these trainings because particularly if you're a new planning board member, or maybe even if you're not, it's always good to have a refresher or a primer on what governs your decisions and a few tips and tricks for proper procedures in decision-making. So it would come as no surprise that you are governed as a municipal planning board by a number of bodies of law. The first, of course, is the constitutions. Both the state and federal constitution have a concept called the supremacy clause at the federal level, and that does trickle down to the state level. And it essentially says that both federal law and state law reign supreme. And so to the extent that they are inconsistent with municipal ordinance, both of those bodies of law take precedent. There's also the due process clause, which we'll be talking a little bit about, particularly procedural due process, which essentially is the right to a fair hearing and a fair and impartial decision-maker. That is also in both the federal and the state constitutions. You, of course, have the Town of Cumberland Code of Ordinances, which includes all of the things that we just talked about and a whole number of other provisions that we'll talk about shortly. And then finally, there's Robert's Rules of Order. I know it's thrown around a lot, but it is always a gap filler that's available to municipal boards. A lot of times, depending on how seedy an issue is, I'll come with a copy in my bag. And we refer to it from time to time. It is not a vestige of a bygone era, particularly on procedural issues. If there are questions about which motions take precedent, on reconsideration of certain things, to the extent that these topics aren't discussed in your local ordinances, and a lot of them are not, Robert's Rules can always be used as a legal gap filler. So a note about quasi-judicial and legislative roles. What I'm going to be talking about for the rest of the presentation is talking about your quasi-judicial role. And what that means is your role as a board that is effectively sitting as some manner of court. Your job as a planning board is to receive applications in a whole number of contexts, be they site plan, subdivision, or any of those permutations. Take the application materials and the testimony that's presented to you as part of a public process. And essentially weigh that information against the standards that you have in your ordinances and determine, are all of the standards that we are required to find to be met, have they been met? Have they not been met? Do we need to impose conditions of approval on a particular plan to make sure that they have been met? That's a quasi-judicial role, and that's where due process considerations are relevant and especially pertinent. The flip side of that is your legislative role. And that role really comes about when you're looking at amending or recommending, I should say, amendments of your town code to the town council for enactment. So should you, in the course of your work, determine or think, and I know you're dealing with two such amendments tonight, think that there are some amendments to your code that would be helpful or useful? You can recommend them. There's a process laid out in your code for doing so. Recommend them for adoption to the town council. That's a legislative role. You're essentially stepping into the role of a legislature or Congress, whichever analog you'd like to use. There are no due process considerations there. You are essentially, you are recommending a solution to something. There is not an applicant in front of you. There is not a set of standards that you are meant to go by. The only standard, in fact, in terms of amending your town zoning ordinance is that it must be consistent with your comprehensive plan. Beyond that, you are free to recommend most things. Of course, there are limits imposed by state law. But again, that is a legislative role and you have more free rein, I should say, within reason, of course, in that role than you do in a quasi-judicial role. So impartiality. This is one of the, this is one of the big topics, and it's thrown around a lot, unfortunately. And sometimes for good reason. Of course, it is usually the first thing that those that are perhaps unhappy with your decisions may decide to bring up. They feel that you as a body are unfair or impartial or are partial to the cause that they do not represent. Our goal in giving you this training and our goal always as municipal decision-makers is making sure that while people may disagree with you, that's simply because they would have liked a different decision. It's not because the evidence compelled a different decision or because you as a board were influenced by factors that you shouldn't have been influenced by. So conflicts of interest. There is, in fact, a statutory test laid out in Title 30A, which governs municipal affairs. And that test essentially is that you cannot sit and render a decision as part of this planning board if the applicant in front of you, well, if you hold directly or indirectly, and that means either you personally own or your spouse or a member of your immediate family directly owns 10% or more of an ownership stake in the entity that is there. This makes plenty of sense. If you are going to have a financial benefit directly from somebody having a project approved, you should not be the one approving it. Seems to make plenty of sense. But it's slightly a higher bar than you would expect. I mean, this is not saying that your 15th cousin on your mother's side, once removed, you know, owned a piece of this property 150 years ago. We're talking about direct pecuniary interest in the present day. But if that's not enough, there is a case law test that comes from a very old case, Tuscan versus Smith. And it requires your recusal for a conflict of interest if, and I quote, "you are in a situation of temptation to serve your own personal interests to the prejudice of the interests of those for whom the law authorized and required you to act." So it's a more general test. Are you going to be tempted for, you know, for a reason such as a business connection or a personal connection, any other connection like that, to act in your own personal interest and not in the interest of the town, which is to fairly and impartially decide these applications? And if that's not enough, there is a section, it's 2605 subsection 5, that says, above all, municipal officials should do everything in their power to avoid any appearance of impropriety. And so our suggestion will always be is that if you are concerned that even if you don't meet either of these tests, that someone may reasonably look at you and say, well, that just doesn't pass the straight face test or the smell test. They couldn't possibly be impartial here. Even if that's simply not true, and you could write a book explaining exactly why that's not true, if you have any concern that your involvement in that action could still appear to be improper for a perceived reason like that, it's always a suggestion to recuse yourself. That's why you have a large board. It's why you have people to fill in there. It is always easier, I can tell you from a municipal attorney's perspective, is that if there's ever a legal challenge of a decision and the alleged grounds are that the board or a board member, especially one who cast a deciding vote, was biased or had a conflict of interests. It's a hard standard to meet on one end, but it's also unnecessary aggravation and it costs the town money and time and energy to defend that. So consider that.
So you didn't mean to cross that out?
Well, so appearance of impropriety, we don't want it. That's the whole, that's the whole point. That's a good pickup, but yes. If you feel like there is an appearance of impropriety, count yourself out. How do we handle conflicts if you think you have them or you even think there appear to be one? The first thing is after the matter has been introduced to the full public, you need to make a disclosure on the record. Sometimes that can be uncomfortable depending on the situation, but it is always better, although in theory you could do it in writing, I think it's always easier to do it in person with your own words. Explain what is going on. State on the record whether you can be fair or impartial. If you're planning on recusing yourself, you don't need to say, I absolutely can't be fair and impartial. It's enough to say, this is the situation, I will be recusing myself from this matter. That's enough. If there's a clear conflict, you abstain. If there's an appearance of impropriety, I'd still suggest that you abstain, but I would respect your decision. If you can say on the record, this is the situation, I absolutely can be fair and impartial, that is a much better situation for us to be in after the fact than if you say nothing or if you say something that clearly indicates a conflict of interest and you still choose not to abstain.
Yeah, I think the experience that we have, I've seen on the planning board, probably number one are lawyers, because a lot of times their firm might be involved in something. Number two is engineers. That they, and that one is kind of related to how remote it is and.
Yep.
And then the other one is if they are abutters to a property that we're looking. I would say, from my experience on the planning board, those are the three that get us caught up more than.
Right.
But since we've only, we've only had one lawyer that, and one engineer, this hasn't been as much of an issue with us, but.
And I'm retired.
And you're retired, so.
Well, and in a lot of cases, if this is a neighbor, I mean, keep in mind, just because your neighbor may be sitting here asking for something from the planning board, that's not an automatic grounds for recusal. Now, of course, practically speaking, if someone is asking to do something that may have an effect on your property value, I would question whether you think you can be fair and impartial in those circumstances. Some would certainly say that you're not. And again, query what happens if that application is denied and you and your neighbor don't get along very well. I think that may be leading you to a pretty obvious answer. But these are, these are general rules. Every case is somewhat specific to the facts and circumstances there. Keep in mind, you as a board, if you feel very strongly that one of your members needs to recuse themselves and they refuse to do so, you as a board remain able, through a majority vote, to require their recusal. It rarely happens, but sometimes it does become necessary. And then finally, if you are going to abstain, please sit in the audience. It is, it is hard, even if you don't say a single thing, people will misinterpret your facial expressions, people will misinterpret the influence or lack thereof you may have over your fellow board members if you continue to sit on a panel when you're not even participating. It's just easier that way. Effective of failure to abstain. Keep in mind, if there's a challenge of the decision and the decision is based on a partial board, a lack of an impartial board, you're going to see the matter again. It's going to get remanded. And then you'll be forced to recuse yourself because a court will tell you to do so. And we'd like to avoid that if possible. This is a different concept from bias, and I just, yes, please.
So I gotta, I do a lot of construction building. And I would imagine eventually, if I'm here for three years, that somebody will be an applicant that I do work with, that I might pay as a subcontractor. They, you know, a lot of these guys do a lot of their own stuff.
Right.
They could come before the planning board, you know, and I write checks to them. You know, I pay them for work performed. It may have been five years ago, maybe tomorrow. I don't know if that's the level of recusal or what.
Well, I mean, if you don't own a property interest, if you, you know, if you're not an investor in or a co-partner with one of these, you wouldn't be automatically required to recuse yourself. I always think, I mean, my rule of thumb is disclosure is always the best. And so, you know, even if you haven't talked with someone in six months, I think it's always best, it is not hurting anybody's case for you to say, look, I work in construction. You know, the GC on this project or the engineer, somebody that I do business with in, you know, in my business. But with that said, I don't have any personal connection to this project. I don't have any reason to think I can't be fair and impartial. I'm not meaning to put words in your mouth, but if that's the situation, then I think it's proper to disclose that on the record, say whether you can be fair and impartial. If you can, I think it's fair to say you can remain. And if your fellow board members have a real concern about that.
I've hired almost every civil engineer in the Poland area. So I mean, every one of these guys is going to stand up there. I've worked with most of them.
Right. And so, you know, I think, again, you may end up disclosing a lot. But I always, but again, keep in mind, I mean, you want to, the whole reason for avoiding that appearance of impropriety is to make sure that the. is to make sure that the public are confident that when they come before this board, they're going to get a fair shake.
We'll know. You really know deep in, oh, this is kind of close enough or but I think generally if a person, if one of the members, my experience as a member feels that they can be partial on it, that the board, we vote, that the board generally goes along with it. Because I haven't seen a lot of instances, and if it's really something, you know, kind of the person knows.
Yeah, I mean, I was a butter to a recent subdivision. I would have had to recuse myself for that.
Right.
Directly buttered, you know.
Right. I think that's fair, and I think that's always, that's always easier. What you, it is, it is always easier, I mean, you are in a good position in the sense that you have a full board of seven. You have, for lack of a better way of putting it, you have people to pick up your slack. You're not in a position, and I have a lot of boards unfortunately who are in this position, where they only have three members on a seven-member board. If they lose one, they've lost their, or three members on a five-member board or four on a seven, they've lost their quorum. That doesn't mean you shouldn't not, you shouldn't be recusing yourself if it's going to cause the need for a matter to be continued until there's a full board. It's always better to do that and delay things rather than take a guess and see what happens. Bias is a slightly different but connected topic. It is also a reason why you would be recusing yourself from consideration of a matter. There are some automatic reasons to recuse yourself. A blood or marital relation up to, I think the state law says it's the sixth level of consanguinity, which is second cousins, in case you're curious. So if you have a second cousin or anything closer to you than that who's an applicant before you, you have to recuse yourself. State law says you have to. State of mind or investigations are two other reasons. So state of mind is simply that. Let's say the applicant has a kid in school with your kid. They got into a fight recently. You didn't like how they handled the situation. Has nothing to do with the application, but you don't trust this person or you don't think they make good decisions. That's a good reason to not be involved in the situation. An investigation is slightly different, and this is where we talk a little bit about due process. You as a board are tasked with reviewing the information that's presented to you, right? And that's it. As hard as it may be, you know, you're looking at an application, a set of written materials that's presented to you. You're listening to people give testimony and, you know, maybe testimony is a strong word, but information presented to you orally. You're listening to a butter comments. You're listening to written email or reading written emails that are put into you. What you shouldn't be doing is going online, going to LinkedIn or Facebook or someplace like that and researching the applicant, see what they do for work, see whether you think they're a good person or not. You shouldn't be doing that. You also shouldn't be doing drive-by site visits on your own to see what the house looks like or to see what the property looks like. If you need a site visit, do it as a full board. Invite the public to come along. So again, if you, wittingly or not, are taking into account information that's outside of the record, this isn't to say that you can't use your own life experience to judge information that is being presented to you and how, whether you're convinced by it or not. That's okay, but we're talking about going out and doing your own research. It's a term that's overused these days, and especially in the context of a planning board or a zoning board. It's not something you should be doing because that's unfair to the applicant or other people. Because if you think about it, you are taking into account information and frankly, not giving them the chance to rebut any misconceptions that you may have by taking in that information. So again, same process for handling bias, whatever the reason, however it comes up, full disclosure on the record, state whether you can be fair and impartial. If it's clear, abstain. If it's not clear, the board can vote to require you to abstain and then sit in the audience if that is what you are doing. So this all, these topics all go to due process again. And this is making sure that folks who are before you have a fair opportunity to get the application that they've submitted granted. Things that you should not be doing between meetings. Some applications you may handle on one night, but I know in a planning board context, it's quite rare that that happens. You've got preliminary plans. You've got preliminary approvals. You've got final approvals. You have everything in between. Ex parte communications should not happen. An ex parte communication is when a single board member or perhaps two board members are discussing matters that are pertinent to that application outside of the context of the meeting. That ex parte communication could be with the applicant themselves, with an applicant's representative, with an abutter who has noted an objection to a project or even has noted their support. It could also, as we talk a little bit about, be a conversation with staff unintentionally leading to a discussion of your thoughts about the merits of an application. As we said before, discussion of an application should happen in this room, and that's where it should stay. So same thing with site visits. This is why site visits can be a little bit tricky. Like I said, I always, I always consider site visits to be the opportunity for people to put eyes on a project and then have conversations about what you've seen in the context of a public meeting. Same with conversations around town. You know, you may run into someone in the grocery store who knows you're on the planning board and they want to, you know, to lobby you on behalf of all of these things. I think it's important, if that's the situation you find yourself in, say thank you for your concern. Put your concern in writing. Send it to the whole board. We'll know where you stand on these things. Or come to a meeting and speak into the microphone. If you must, you can hear them out and then say, "Thank you. I can't discuss the, you know, the application while it's still pending." It's the right way to handle that. Same with calls from the public and the press. I suppose I don't really know why a member of the press herald staff or someone like that or the forecaster might be calling individual planning board members. If anything, they're probably calling town staff or they're calling me. And we would say the same things, that we're not going to comment on pending applications. It's just like a lawyer will say if their client's being sued, "We don't comment on pending litigation. We don't comment on pending applications." And working with staff. Staff, you have an invaluable resource here. Not many towns have professional planning staff that can help you through things. Communicating with staff in the context of a pending application. If there is additional information that you feel you need from an applicant in order to consider something, that request should be put on the record in this room. If it occurs to you in the middle of the night, for whatever reason, or on a weekend or in between meetings, you can communicate that to Bridget, who can then communicate that to the applicant, who can then bring that information here for the next meeting. But what shouldn't be happening is individual planning board members talking with staff about their thoughts, their non-professional thoughts or professional thoughts about an application, whether they think it meets criteria. Again, fair and impartial for the person or the entity who's here in front of you seeking permission.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, please.
Site visits.
Yes.
So if everyone is on a site visit and something unexpected or unusual or obvious or not obvious appears, is this something you want to keep to yourself and then bring back to the board or is it, wow, there's so much water, you know, where did all that come from?
Yeah, I mean, I think it, both, I guess is the answer. If you're all on a site visit and you are walking through things and you as a planning board member have a concern about something like this. Is that a wetland? Has that been delineated, you know, anything like that? I think the best part is to make sure that that question is delivered to the entire group.
Okay.
So little groups of people shouldn't be going off to explore different parts of the site.
Look, water.
Yeah, look, water. And if the applicant says, "Ooh, you know, we can get that delineated and we'll show you a new plan at the next meeting," something like that. It, to the extent it can possibly be done, you know, the goal is to make sure that everybody who's on the site walk has the same access to the same information. As a practical reality, that's often impossible because it's outside, it's loud, things like that. That's why there are minutes taken also at site visits. And, and so, you know, the best rule of thumb I can say is, is attempt as best you're able to make sure that everybody has access to the same information. It's usually best, you know, if you have specific concerns, say, "All right, you know, we'd like you to address that at the next meeting." And then you dive into the details in this context rather than out in the field. So meeting conduct. A couple of, you know, which I think are pretty obvious points, but important to talk about nonetheless. You always have board rules. I don't know whether you have, do you have printed bylaws? Not many boards do, and they're not required. But it's really important, and I know that you do this traditionally, is just make sure that every application is dealt with the exact same way. You know, giving the applicant the opportunity to speak, given other members of the public who are interested in opportunities to speak, receiving public input, just making sure, and this perhaps seems sort of a lofty goal, is make sure that every applicant feels like they've gotten the same shake that the person before them or after them gets. Fairness to speakers and receiving public input, you know, the only thing I'll add to this is that, you know, I know you may, especially at pretty controversial projects, feel the need to limit the time that people can speak. You can do that, but I think it's important to set those ground rules at the beginning. Don't do it halfway through. It's definitely not a good protocol to say, "Well, we're getting close on time, so now going forward, everybody's going to have two minutes to speak." Set the ground rules at the beginning and enforce them appropriately. A couple of things also to keep in mind. If you miss a meeting and you'd still like to participate in the board's consideration of the application, you have a couple of options. One, you could simply not do that and not be involved going forward. You say, "I missed the first meeting. I'm not going to continue to be involved." You could also watch the video and review all the materials from the previous meetings and just state on the record at the next meeting that I've done all of that, that I feel like I can participate and that I'm caught up to speed. And of course, it's appropriate to give the applicant an opportunity to object to that if they feel that that's inappropriate. I've rarely seen that happen, but it can. Allow yourself enough time for making a decision. It's important to get it right. It's important to keep in, you know, to get the information that you feel that you need. It's important not to feel like you need to be rushed through something if you don't feel that you are ready to make a decision. Also important to keep in mind, just because somebody is up at the lectern and they have a couple of letters after their name, and that includes me, does not mean that you need to give their opinion any extra weight or less weight than anybody else. Obviously, engineers, architects, attorneys have special expertise. And they can explain things, you know, with some gravitas that others may not be able to do. But as a, as a legal matter, if you are going to a court and the applicant says, "Well, I had three engineers and two architects making my case. The planning board found against me." And the neighbors who were successful in having the application defeated didn't have anybody for them. That's not an automatic ground to reverse the decision. You are not required to give priority or benefit of the doubt or anything like that to professionals. Just to keep in mind. Doesn't mean that you shouldn't. It just means that you're not required to. You have a quorum of four on this board. You also have the minority rule for whatever, whatever it's worth. Your decisions are comprised of those who are present and voting. And so what that means essentially is that as long as you have a quorum of four, the majority is not going to be a majority of seven. It will be the majority of how many people are in the room and not recused. That sometimes comes into play, often doesn't. Prior mistakes by a planning board is often a cudgel that people try and use and say, "Well, I know in 1985 this was approved without any problem. Why am I getting the runaround now?" Or, "My neighbor was here two years ago and got the same thing," all of those sorts of things. You are making decisions based on what is in front of you in one particular application. You are not bound by precedent in the way that the US Supreme Court or the main Supreme Court are. You are looking at each application anew, and so that's important to keep in mind. You are able to reconsider your decisions. It's not laid out in your code, but the default rule from Robert's Rules, excuse me, is that reconsideration needs to be requested at the next meeting. If it's not, then the opportunity has passed. And it needs to be requested by somebody who was on the prevailing side of the previous motion. So if you voted to deny an application and an application was adopted, you cannot, as someone on the losing side of that vote, come back and still request reconsideration. It is a tool for somebody who feels, based on whatever factors are before them, feels that it's, that they maybe made the wrong decision the first time and they would like the opportunity to reconsider that. If you feel the need to that, there's a lot more specifics to that process, and I can always put those in writing for Bridget if that's a situation you are ever in. I'll breeze through all of this. You have staff that prepares written decisions for your consideration. You, of course, are the ones who ultimately are responsible for preparing a decision and adopting it. Couple of reasons, in case these weren't obvious, you are required by law to adopt a written decision for every decision that you make. That's both by FOA and specifically for site plans in section 229.7 of your code. There are also practical reasons, the biggest of which is if a decision never goes up on appeal to a court, court needs to have a written document to review in order to determine whether you made the correct decision. More often than not, unfortunately, if we have a municipal decision that goes up on appeal and we weren't involved or there weren't staff involved, a lot of times the court is going to remand that decision to the planning board because, not because the decision was right or wrong, but because there simply weren't findings that allowed the judge to look at that decision and determine whether it was done correctly. These are, I'm going to breeze through these because you are in the enviable position of, again, having a lot of assistance with this. A lot of the boards that we train are not, and so these are more important. But each decision needs to have findings of fact, which essentially are the recitation of the important facts. The property owner, the addresses involved, the zoning involved. And then conclusions of law, which essentially is based on our analysis of all of these factors and our analysis of every performance standard that's applicable. We are deciding to either approve, approve with conditions or deny this application.
Actually, while we have you and Bridget raised this, right now, we publicly read the findings of fact.
Yep.
And Bridget has noted that Falmouth and Yarmouth don't do this. Cape does. So is there anything written in stone, one way or the other? I've got a couple of our members that would be very happy, you know, reading the finding.
I enjoy it tremendously.
So, yes, I was asked the question beforehand, and so Bridget can make sure that I give the same response when I'm at the podium. So there's no, the requirement is that you have the written document. There are certainly planning boards, and there always seem to be the ones where, that start this deliberations at like 10 o'clock at night that they want to read through every single finding fact and performance standard on the record. You can do that. There's nothing that says you can't or shouldn't, except perhaps for time. My suggestion, and this is just from practical experience, and this is compliant with the law. My suggestion is, you know, the board is going to receive a draft set of findings that staff has prepared. You absolutely must go through that entire document as a board on the record. One, to demonstrate to the public that this is your document. Someone else outside is not making their decision for you. They're simply providing you a jumping off point. Perhaps they're mistaken about facts. Perhaps they heard something a little bit differently. Ultimately, it's up to the board to perfect those findings to make sure that they match your decision. The second, you know, well, those are the two main purposes. The third, of course, is to make sure that members of the public are aware in advance of what your decision is going to look like and the components of it. But what you can do, and what I've suggested in other contexts is, you know, you have the decision document up on the screen, perhaps. And it's available. It's available on the town website beforehand. It's available in hard copy here. Everybody can follow along if they choose to. And as a board, you know, either one by one or set by set, perhaps all of the basic, you know, information, findings of fact, and then each individual review standard. You can go through them and make sure you can go through them and make sure, um, you know, for the findings of fact, does anybody on the board have any edits that they would like to make or see made? And those can be made on the, on the spot. And once you've made it through the basic set of findings of fact, you can have, um, a single motion to adopt those findings of fact. The caveats to that, of course, is you should have an individual motion, and I think it's important to read the standard in. For each performance standard, you need to have a separate vote. The reason for that is, is that, as a practical matter, each application needs to satisfy every single performance standard, and so an applicant needs to know why their application was denied, perhaps. But, as a practical matter, you don't need to read every single piece in, as long as you can follow along and say, you know, for instance, um, you know, uh, performance standard seven, um, is effect on adjacent water bodies, um, this is the finding of fact that we have here, does anybody wanna change that? And then you can have a vote on that, uh, particular standard and move on.
Well, it kinda sounds like we continue with what we're doing, uh, that...
If it ain't broke, don't fix it, but there are ways you can be more efficient with it in theory, if that's what your goal is.
We were just curious about, it was the waivers, but I talked to Ben earlier.
Yep.
We have to approve each waiver individually.
Yep.
Which we do.
Waivers and conditions of approval, waivers, conditions of approval, and, and individual performance standards should have a, uh, should have separate votes.
Just wanna point out to the public that, uh, that have tuned in for the planning board meeting, that we are working our way through a legal training workshop, so when you see us performing, uh, at planning board meetings, that we're doing it correctly. We have, uh, uh, three, uh, new members, and trust me, us old members need to be, uh, refreshed, so that's why you haven't seen the meeting start, uh, yet, so stay tuned.
Well, this is the last slide. You were, um, you were, you knew that I was getting right to my end, and I appreciate everybody's, um, bearing with us. I, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna gloss right over this because frankly, um, again, these are options for boards that don't have ways of, uh, established ways of doing this. You know, at, uh, in Cumberland, and you are very, again, lucky to have this, you will have staff, um, maybe with my assistance if necessary, put together drafts that you will go through at, at your next meeting. That shouldn't change. That's definitely the preferred way to do it if you can make it work. Just in case you were curious, though, uh, and some boards unfortunately do do this, you cannot just reference meeting, meeting minutes as your findings of fact, there needs to be a separate document, um, that lays out your facts and your conclusions of law. And also, you can't simply delegate to staff or an attorney to draft a document without it coming back to the board for review, amendment, and ultimate approval. It is your decision, and that's the important thing to stress. That is all I have. I went a little bit over, but you asked some very good questions, and I hope it was helpful. Bridgette distributed copies of the slides, um, if you don't have them, and then as always, we're always available to you, um, through Bridgette if you have any particular questions, um, on procedure or on the law, um, that's her job, and we like, um, we like helping that way, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any other questions? Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Really appreciate that.
And if anybody's, um, you know, didn't get enough tonight, you can come to the Comprehensive Plan Committee meeting on Thursday evening and hear the same spiel.
You'll see Lorraine and I there.
Most of the same spiel, at least the FOA portions, uh, will go a little bit more brevity, so, stay warm.
So, did we get any, uh, did anybody need to take a quick break before we start?
Let's just walk around.
What?
Stand up.
Uh, just stand up a minute. Bridgette, have we heard from Josh at all?
No. No, you're good.
Okay, so, uh, I think, uh, that we will welcome everybody, uh, to the January 21st meeting of the Cumberland Planning Board. Those of you that, uh, again, checked in at 7 o'clock, we were going through, uh, our legal training that's, uh, required of all new members, and, uh, really a refresher course for us, uh, and, uh, by doing that, it helps make us more, uh, effective board members. So I will call the, uh, meeting to order, and, uh, I would, uh, we have, Josh is missing, we have two new members, and, uh, Bob, uh, Bob LeBlank, and Bob, could you give the public just a little bit of your background?
Sure, um, I'm, uh, currently do a lot of real estate development. In the past, I've owned an industrial flooring company, um, actually been before the point of origin, come on a number of times, uh, on certain projects, and really wanted to get involved on the other side and, um, you know, bring some of my, um, past experience into the, into the town, and, uh, you know, I'm interested in seeing how it goes, there's a little difference sitting on the side, so it should be interesting and fun.
And how long have you been in town, Bob?
Uh, nineteen sixty-eight.
Okay, so, you know where, you know at least where half the bodies are buried. And our other new member is Stacy Daigle, and Stacy, could you do the same thing?
Yes, I've only lived in, lived in town for thirty years, so a few of the bodies. And I live on Brusso Road near the fairgrounds. Um, I'm a, a newly retired, as of a year, um, thirty-five-year business owner, commercial printer, and, um, I am addicted to town council meetings and planning board meetings, and I love this town, so I'm honored to be here, have a lot to learn, but, um, but looking forward to it. Thank you very much.
One thing I learned when Stacy was, uh, speaking to our alliance meeting, that when her, her direct mailing company, uh, that she bought all of their stamps at the Cumberland Post Office, and, uh, as a result, the Cumberland Post Office was one of the large, larger, uh, revenue...
In the northeast. Everyone was curious for a long time, "What's going on in Cumberland? Tens of thousands, hundreds of that, millions actually of postage stamps, actually live postage stamps on a, on a reel."
And I think when, uh, you and, and Dave, uh, uh, closed your business, that's the reason why we're only getting mail three times a week in Cumberland now, so, uh, this, uh, this person next to me is the one that you need to call.
Oh, no.
So, uh, anyway, uh...
Thank you.
We've done the roll call, and we need to, uh, elect a chair and a vice chair, so I will entertain, uh, motions for, uh, chair.
Peter, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we, um, elect you to serve as chair for another year.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any other nominations? Then I hear a motion for nominations to cease. Then, uh, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
The only thing I, uh, I don't, uh, anybody going forward, uh, that's interested in doing this, I, uh, have, uh...
Peter, you've, you just voted to cease the nominations, you need to vote on them.
Okay, so we need to vote, uh, uh, all, all in favor of, uh, Peter Bingham to be chair?
Yes.
Opposed? Abstentions? Then, thank you again, as I, uh, it's the only promise I make on this thing, that, uh, I'll try to keep the trains running on time. And now I, I entertain a motion for, uh, vice chair.
Well, I would move that we, um, ask Lorraine if she would do it again.
Lorraine, are you willing to do it?
I'm willing to do it, but I also was gonna say that Ann or Jeff, if either of you were interested in stepping in, and would like the opportunity, I'm, I'm happy to continue reading the findings of fact, um, but, um, if you'd like to, if anybody else, so Jeff or Ann.
Yeah?
Yeah, I'll, I'll yield to you, you've, you've been working on this so hard.
You know, I will, I will say yes, because I know, Lorraine, you're on that, um...
Comprehensive.
Comprehensive.
Okay, well, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
So I, I will entertain a motion then for vice chair.
I'm, sorry, I'm, I motioned that, uh, we nominate Ann for, uh, vice chair for the year of two thousand, two thousand and twenty-five.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded? Do I hear a motion for, uh, nominations to cease?
I motioned that we cease the nominations.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of nomination cease? All in, uh, favor of Ann Soschak as vice chairman?
I'll abstain.
And absten, abstentions? And congratulations, Ann, and, sure, yeah. Sometimes, uh, you'll get a chance before the year is out. We'll, we'll, we'll let you do the school one, how's that? Okay, so, uh, we've done that, uh, the, the next thing is that I'll, uh, look for a motion to approve the December seventeenth, uh, minute meetings. Now, that's interesting, uh, one, two, three, yeah, we've got a quorum to do that, right?
Mm-hmm.
Because the new members have to abstain. So I'll look for a motion to approve the, uh, December seventeenth meeting.
I'll move.
Yes, move. Seconded?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Four opposed, two abstentions. Okay, we'll move into, uh, site plan approvals, uh, and, uh, we have one staff site plan approval, it was amended to an existing site plan for modifications to installed antennas on an existing telecommunications tower located at 159 Range Way, as shown in tax assessor's map, R-03, uh, Lot B-19. So that's one of the things that if it's a minor one, so just public and new members, that the staff can do that, and it doesn't reach the level where the planning board has to, uh, do it. So there are no minor change approvals, so we'll go into hearings and presentations, and the first one is to review and recommend to the town council on amendments to the Cumberland Code of Ordinances, Chapter Thirty, Boards and Commissions, Article One, uh, the planning board. And, uh, before we begin, just to kind of, uh, get the, get the discussion going, that when reading the roles of the planning board, if everybody saw that the planning board is responsible for the development of the comprehensive plan. Now, in practice, at least the three previous ones that I have done, that the Comprehensive Plan Committee is actually the one that does the staff work and the development of the thing, and then the plan, and then goes to the planning board. So we have never really, in the last thirty years, we have never codified the role of the Comprehensive Plan Committee. So what I had proposed, and was talking with the town manager today, that we simply, uh, and Bridgette, can you read the, uh, the thing that got developed on that, that will kinda solve that?
Okay, so this is thirty dash four. We will insert the language. The board will be assisted by the Comprehensive Plan Committee. The composition of this committee will be the responsibility of the town council, and efforts will be supported by the town planner.
So does that make sense, that we finally formalize what's been going on in our, uh... That makes sense?
So it's, so, thirty, thirty, thirty dash four A, "The planning board shall prepare new or revised comprehensive plan for the town of Cumberland at least every five years." The board will be, the planning board will be assisted by a Comprehensive Plan Committee. The composition and appointment of this committee will be the responsibility of town council. Efforts will be supported by the town planner. And then, "Such plan shall conform as nearly as practi, practicable to the definition thereof", blah, 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 main statute.
So you're just adding that additional language in there?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
To meet, really, with practice, what we've been doing.
Any, uh, any other thoughts from the board on any of the other provisions?
So, under thirty dash six, um, and this is just kind of a consistency thing, when you get to the, um, last sentence, it says professional appointments made by the manager. I would suggest that it say by the town manager shall be with the advice of the planning board and subject to town council confirmation. I think it's to be consistent with the titles that the manager, the board, and the council have.
I guess my only question is, is where's the nominating committee fall in that for, like, the, for the town council? Is that, I mean, is that part of that whole, or am I off basis?
No, they wouldn't, they would set the rules, they could do it with the nominated committee, they could, uh, just, uh, they basically set the rules on how they do it.
Sure, okay.
If you watch the last town council meeting, when they were going over that thing, that they, uh, kind of took about two hours to, uh, uh, get that done, but, uh, that's their problem and not ours. So is there anything else, uh, in this ordinance that jumps out to, uh, anybody?
Okay, I, I just had a question. Uh, we saw this last month.
Yes.
Right, right, and then, and so then it went to the town council?
It went to the town council, yep, for, for formal recommendation to us, where we are holding the public hearing tonight on it, and then we'll recommend that, um, if you're comfortable with it as amended, we would recommend it to town council for adoption.
Okay, so we'll go back to them, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
On Monday.
Okay, and so this would have any changes that they had made the last, at their meeting?
Yep, and you can see on section thirty dash seven, which Josh suggested we strike out, council was concerned with that, and you can see the comments in here, I actually sent those to Ben, um, and Ben's actually reviewed the whole thing, so the town attorney, um, has reviewed all of it, and his revisions are in here as well, so...
Yeah, I did see that.
From his standpoint, everything is...
Okay, right, right.
Good to go.
Okay.
Uh, is there, uh, or, any other thoughts?
Oh, I just had a question.
Yes.
An additional question there. Oops, hold on a minute. Okay, uh, in, um, hold on a minute, uh, section thirty dash four F, uh, we took out, "The board shall investigate and make such reports and, uh, recommendations upon such matters." We took out "as it may deem appropriate." So I guess we have no, um, initiative? We can't just...
What letter are you at?
I'm, okay, I'm at, um...
F? Thirty-four.
Thirty dash four F.
F.
Upon such matters, second line, "Upon such matters," blue language, "upon such matters," as, and we took out "it may deem appropriate." So now it would be "as may be referred to it by the town council or the town manager." So that means we can't do something on our own, is that... So it's just that...
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, correct. So the items that, if the town council or the town manager asks us to make reports or recommendations, we can do that, but... But we are not to initiate our own investigations.
But I thought we're, Ann raises a good point that, didn't we at the last meeting? You know, you've, I mean, we can initiate, we can initiate changes, right? We, we, we did last week with, with these things or last month. I mean, that's, it's come out of us, so, I mean, we do have the authority, good catch. We, we do have the authority to make recommendations.
On. Yeah, okay. I, I don't know, I can follow back up with Ben on that. Those are, the blue is Ben.
Okay, yeah, I would ask Ben.
Good catch. Because we just did it.
Okay.
Well, I think the thing too is.
You were referred to, in this meeting, you're being referred from council to take formal action on.
Yes.
The last meeting, you were just me.
Right, but, 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 but we were the ones that initiated it, not them, correct?
Right, and you're allowed to for certain ordinances.
Okay.
I mean, written in the language of the ordinance, you're allowed to initiate things. So subdivision and zoning, you're allowed to initiate changes.
Right.
Too.
But was it?
But I'll, I'll get clarification.
Yeah, so I, to me, it was that in your new role, that you were reviewing documentation and ordinances and whatnot and you, and that's, and you brought those to our attention and that was the genesis of this.
Yeah, and then you initiated it, got it to council.
Yeah, so you made us aware, we reviewed it, we sent it to the, so it's.
Kind of, it's us then.
It's us.
Yeah, you are initiating this, you are initiating these ones, but if there are different ones, I don't know.
Yeah, ask them if there's some we're not supposed to do, I guess, you know, I.
Okay, I mean, yeah, you can't initiate, yeah, right, you can't initiate changes to like.
Yeah, I mean, if we wanted to do, we couldn't initiate, let's say, a noise ordinance.
Right.
You know, when you saw the people coming.
Appropriate, yeah.
So any other comments before I open the public hearing? Hearing none?
I was just gonna say, can I just pull the string just a little bit on that? So it's almost in the course of us conducting our business on a monthly basis that we may come across things in our general code that we identify as needing a change. That's what I think this paragraph is saying. Okay.
Okay, anything else from, anything else from the board before I open the public hearing? Hearing none. I will open the public hearing for any members of the public that wish to comment. And given the fact that we have no members of the public here, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to the board for action.
If you want to table it until we have an answer, you can do that.
What?
If you want to table it until we have an answer on the language.
No, I think we just put it in there that, that what our recommendation is, that on that, I mean, on the.
We just talked about.
I would say let's, let's just forward it with the additional recommendation on, on F. Can we do that?
Make the change and.
Yeah, can we make the change and then amend it?
Yes, if you can help me understand what the change needs to be.
Okay, I will leave somebody smarter than I am to sort that out.
All that.
Ann?
Leave in that it may deem appropriate?
Yeah, it may deem appropriate.
As it may deem appropriate.
Or.
Or.
As, or as.
Or as may be referred to it by the town council. Okay, yep, okay, got it.
So then I will look for a motion to approve item one as amended tonight.
Peter, I'll, I'll make an, I'll make a motion that we we approve public hearing number, number one regarding Cumberland Code ordinances, Chapter thirties, Chapter thirty Board and Commissions, Article one, Planning Board.
Okay, looking for a second on that?
As amended. As amended.
I'll second it.
Ann seconds. Further discussion?
Um, just quickly, I drafted a motion in my memo to you. We need to make the motion to recommend to town council that they adopt the amendments as amended, as, yeah.
My, my apologies.
No, you're good, you're, you're good. I just want to get the words right.
Yeah. No, let me, let me just read exactly what you have here.
Hey, that's all right, we're, trust me. About once a thing, I go, I get out of not doing what I'm supposed to do, so that's part of the learning. Okay, so we've had a motion and a second. Any, any more discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, you're, you're in favor.
I'm in favor.
Okay, so it's.
Who was the second, Mr. Chair?
Me.
Okay.
So that's, that's all approved, so we're going to go to item two, which is a public hearing to review and recommend approval to the town council on amendments to the Cumberland Code of Ordinances, Chapter two fifty subdivision of land and supporting appendices C, D, and E. So Bridgette, can you give us the Cliff's Notes version?
Sure, so you saw this last month as well, and since then, it went to town council and they've sent it back to us for the public hearing. It also went to Ben McCall, the town attorney, who was able to, you know, do a little bit of wordsmithing and change some things that I had kind of miscarried over from the state statutes. The main revisions are to include some of the approval criteria from the main state statutes. I'm asking to update the submission requirements for all subdivisions to one paper copy instead of two. And then I'm also asking that the application due date is twenty-eight days prior to the planning board meeting instead of the twenty-one that's written in there. That's, logistically, the ordinance gives me ten days to find an application complete. And with the notice periods that we have to give for public hearings, it really only gives me thirty-six hours if I have a twenty-one day turnaround to deem an application complete. And so I'm asking for a little bit of extra time.
Okay, so this will give you a week then?
This will give me about a week, yep, yep. And then the ordinance allows for ten days. With most, some of the things that we noticed have a requirement for two weeks notification period. We receive applications on Tuesday. We have to get notices out to the newspaper by Thursday. So that'll give me a, a week and a little bit more if we can extend that time. Just a quick preview, you'll expect to see that coming in from site plan two. I just haven't gotten there yet. Previously in the fall, we had recommended and town council adopted a change to the workflow, making it more highlighting the fact that anything in R one and R two must be submitted as a conservation subdivision as well as any other form that the applicant wants to use. And I've added revisions to water supply to fifty dash thirty-four to include requirements for separate, like different requirements for public water supply or communal water supply and individual water supplies. So where individual water supplies are, so wells, where we're allowing individual water supplies, we will require a hydrogeologic study or prior to the sale of the lot, they have to show that there's water available, sufficient water supply. So I wanted to add that in because it seemed like something that we're regularly requiring out of applicants where wells are being drilled is the hydrogeologic study. So why not just, instead of maybe requiring it, just putting it in there?
Yeah, Bob, on that one, I think a lot of that came about from your testimony and then we reviewed the Thalmouth, no pride of authorship here. I think we, we took Thalmouth, what Thalmouth was doing. So that will prevent some of the stuff that, that we ran into with the Harris Road.
So that'll just be a hydrogeological study, not a, not any actually physical testing?
No, we can, we have the ability to require it.
Yeah.
Yes, so the hydrogeostudy would be like, the initial requirements would be the desktop study and then the ordinance, as is written, allows the board to request more. So this is, that's new, that's something that we never had before. The board has always been able to request something. But this requires at least the desktop study and then if, if the board deems necessary, they can require more.
How do we reach the level of deciding between a test in, you know, I guess just a study or a physical test? I mean, we really don't have any specific benchmarks, it seems like, for that at this point.
No, I think, you know, we evaluate everything on a case-by-case basis and what, you know, engineers are saying and, you know, what the applicant has said and we, you know, we, we kind of have to make that judgment call on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah.
But Peter.
Yeah, it's kind of, you know it when you see it type thing, I think.
Yeah.
And, and we didn't have that, we didn't have that ability with the last one to do that. I think for the public, that, you know, we talk about all the time, these seventeen standard conditions of approval that the subdivisions have to do. Well, what's going to happen now? And this is entirely getting us in compliance with state regulations. It isn't something that we're doing to throw, throw ball bearings under the feet of developers or something. This is just bringing the qualifications into state regulations. I mean, the only thing I was concerned, and I think Bridgette set me right, was on the farmland. That I was somewhat concerned that, you know, all of a sudden and overzealous, it could be the Conservation Commission or somebody else saying, oh, that's farmland, you can't develop it. But I was, I did get clarification that all they have to do is identify the farming land. It, it, it doesn't give anybody the power to halt a development because we're using farmland.
Correct, farmland as meets the definition that we also put in the ordinance.
Do other members of the board have questions or comments, Ann?
I do. I, I, I think they're just questions if you, if you bear with me, is that all?
Oh, yeah, well, this is why we have you on this. You're our, you and Josh are our policemen.
Could you talk a little bit about this liquidation harvesting? I never, I mean, it makes sense.
Sure, so basically if you're illegally harvesting timber on your property, you can't develop on it.
Okay, so this is, you, you buy the land, you harvest, and then you try to sell it.
If you're, if you're liquidating, if you're liquidating.
Clearcut.
If you're clearcutting, yeah. So, but you can, it's a weird one. And I talked to Ben about this and I think I sent you all an email, follow-up email on it, which I can dig up if we need those, that wording. But it's. It is, the owner, it can go into a subdivision after it's been owned for five years.
Okay.
Even if
Yeah.
the liquidation harvesting happened a year ago. It has to be under the same ownership for five years. Extremely rare situation. It's a state statute.
So I had a question about the same thing, because what if somebody has owned something, a, a piece of land for a, a long time, they clearcut it to make a commercial profit off of the timber and then want to turn around and sell it? They will have owned it for longer than five years. Can they do that?
I think so. They can, they can sell it and then that someone else could be, could subdivide it.
Okay. There, there are harvesting requirements, is that right?
Yes, there's a timber harvest permit requirement in Cumberland.
Two acres or greater.
Two acres or greater.
Okay. Okay, moving on.
So, I'm sorry, what are we trying to prevent?
This is where we need Ben.
Well, somebody, I guess, clearcutting, selling all the timber and then developing it.
But you, but you can if you've spent an ownership for five years. It's, it's.
Yeah.
It's very strange. Let me find that email.
Is there, when you're clearcutting the land, is there a permit required to do that? From the town of Cumberland?
Yes.
For two acres or greater?
For two acres.
Is there a wetland study that happens when that permit is applied for?
Not with the town that I'm aware of, but there's also state requirements that I'm not familiar with. Bill Longley could speak to that.
Yeah, because I think over a certain amount of acres, you have to have some kind of wetland study because there are people that will clearcut, then try to sell it, you know, and changes the whole character of the property.
Yeah.
I imagine there's something in the state
Yeah.
requirements.
Ann, you have others?
I do. Hold on a minute. I made my notes on here, okay. On two fifty dash five U. It's, which is page, oh, wow, well, I'll ask my question. Ooh, again, it's liquidation harvesting. That's another part of it. Land, that first was the definition that set me off and then it, it shows up again. Land subject to liquidation harvesting and, and I, yeah, you're kind of answering that question. I mean, for, yeah, okay.
What page are you on?
Okay, I am now on, I think.
Nine.
Nine on the P B.
Yeah, page nine.
Okay, got it, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so it's only, it's, it's only when it's been, the harvest was done illegally. And in Cumberland, there's a permitting process. And quite frankly, if trees come down in Cumberland, someone's going to come to the town and ask about it. And so.
Yes, we are.
Again, from, from, from Ben and my communications with Ben, it doesn't matter when the violation occurred, as long as the landowner has owned the land for five years, it can, it can be subdivided. But I think that the point is it's extremely rare occurrence. Most of the liquid, most harvesting, most timber harvesting is done legally in the town of Cumberland.
Would we say all harvesting?
I can't, I can't, I can't do that. You can, you can interpret that however you want.
That's what we, our goal is. Okay, is that all harvesting would be done legally? Okay, let's see.
Straight from state statute as well, so.
Oh, okay, no, the next one is, is just about the twenty-eight days, the change to twenty-eight days. And you've explained that. Well, I look at preliminary plan procedures, which is, can I tell what page it is?
It's kind of all over because
Oh, okay.
There's different.
Page twenty-eight, yes.
Okay.
There's different subdivision processes and it's also in the appendices, I believe.
Right, and I just, you know, you've explained it, so that's.
Yeah, and I, I didn't do that haphazardly. I did go around to surrounding towns' ordinances and saw like what they were doing and what their planning board schedule looked like and, and things like that. And I, nobody that I saw has a twenty-one day application period. So I just bumped, I went to twenty-eight, gave, gave. gave, gave us, me, an extra week.
So you're comfortable with that? You, that's the period of time? And, and now, Bob, you're kind of a developer. Would you think that's too short a period?
I, I think there's, for a commercial project or subdivision, you're going to expect to see, you know, you, you need to probably, you're going to go at the quickest every other month. You know, you do, everybody has to review what happened, you know, all the engineers got to look at it. You're not going to jump into the next meeting. I mean, we've tried it a couple times and never made it. Maybe for some minor stuff at the end, when you're in your third or fourth meeting, which happens sometimes, you might have two small conditions. I don't think, I think as long as people know that and you communicate it upfront. You know, if it's a change, and you've had people in the past expect 21 days, and, you know, you've got some re-applicants that are, that are used to that, and all your engineering people, once they know that and understand it, I think it's going to come in, you know, it's going to seem normal. I think they may be unhappy with it, 'cause a lot of people want to just back-to-back-to-back as fast as you can. That's what I try to do, but, you know, 'cause it costs money, you know, time and effort. But I think as long as it's upfront and communicated well, it'll fly.
Okay, so, so we should communicate it?
Yeah, yeah, oh, for sure, for sure, absolutely. And I think the other thing that it does is, you know, we, we do a lot of back-and-forth on, on, on our end, as you know. So I get an application, you know, find it complete, it goes to the town engineer for review. When, they have a short, very short time to turn around those comments, and then I get them back to the applicant. And if we expect anything back from the applicant, it's a very short period of time. And so just expanding it by seven days gives me a little bit more time, our town engineer, the applicant's engineer, you know, if, in fact, we're going to try to push this through to the, you know, on, on that next meeting, it just gives everyone a little bit more time to try and get things going so they're really ready for you all. Yeah, and we'll, I mean, we can do a, we can do a crier, we can do a news bulletin on the planning page, and make sure everyone knows that this change is happening.
I think in most instances, you're really working to get to the next second meeting, 'cause you're really, a lot of information, like back-and-forth for almost two to three weeks, and you're really concerned about, how do I get on then, not the next meeting, but the one after that, is really typically what you're trying to accomplish.
Okay, good, good.
Anything else?
Yeah, I, okay. On the, which you kind of told us, the public are communal water supplies, 250-34, which is all new. And, yeah, we were just talking about that. So, I don't know, I said, walk us through that, but that, you said you got that from the Falmouth, and this is.
I did, and then Ben reviewed it for the, for Cumberland.
Following up with Ann's, did, did we get any comments from the town engineer on that, or any, any of the other town staff on, on that water ordinance change?
No.
Okay.
I know the town manager has seen it. And then, just to be clear, the only thing that I added was in the red text. The green, I just rearranged, if that's not clear. And then the blue is, is the town attorney.
34, 250-34. What page is that, Ann?
That is, starts on 36.
Yeah.
Got it, okay.
No, I can, I mean, the town manager was supportive. I can run it by a peer engineer.
But I would think if they work with Falmouth and Yarmouth, they've worked with, they've worked with this so that they're pretty familiar with it, the engineers. Anything else, Ann?
Hold on a minute. No, I, I think that was it, really. It's well done.
Anything else from any of the other members? I will, at this point, open the public hearing to see any member of the public has anything to say on this. And since we have no public members, I will close the public hearing, and, and you have a particular motion that you want us to read. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm, it's at the last lines on the, on my memo.
I'm going to, I'm going to try to redeem myself this time here.
Jeff got it.
I'm, I'm not doing as well as Josh did, but we'll, we'll see what we can do.
That's all right. You're in training.
Yeah. So I'd like to make a motion that I move that we recommend town council adopt the amendments as written to Cumberland Code of Ordinances, Chapter 250, subdivisions of land and supporting appendices C, D, and E.
There are a second.
Okay, second. Yeah, discussion.
Further discussion.
Yeah. Is she going to show it to the engineer? And then what happens if?
Well, just to pass it by the engineer.
If there's major concerns, then I'll pause.
Okay.
I mean, I can redo the motion if you'd like, Ann.
No, I think this is good enough. They'll get the, they'll get the gist. So any other discussion? Then all in favor? Opposed, then it's approved. So Bridgette, what do we, I did, we, we did get done at 5, 5 of 8. The goal. So Bridgette, what, what possibly do we have in February?
Possibly in February, we'll have the school.
Okay.
Yep, the umside amendment to the site plan. And I have other new business, if you're ready for it.
Excuse me?
I have other new business, if you're ready for it.
Yes, we are.
Okay. Oh, let's see. I had a meeting today with the folks at Skyview Drive. So we, our last approval there was an extension of the road.
Yes.
On Skyview Drive. I don't know if you're familiar with the, the project area. Well, we did a site walk way back in that, in that area. It was with.
Is that the elderly housing project that we approved?
Yeah, yeah. So that property's right on the border with Falmouth. And on the Falmouth side, the developer is building a 40,000-square-foot vet clinic, like emergency vet clinic, a very extensive operation over there. And they are using, they own on the Cumberland side, too, that area that we looked at and where we had approved the Skyview Drive extension. They're actually using the Skyview Drive to cut through and gain access to their Falmouth property. And I wanted to discuss with you if you think we could use that road, if you're okay with me doing a de minimis change to the site plan for them, to allow them to use that road for construction purposes until, you know, for the next probably six to eight months.
Is that going to jeopardize any potential development? Let's say that if that project that we approved all of a sudden gets state funding, is that going to mess up that?
So, no, because the same developer is working on a plan and met with the town manager, the code enforcement officer, and myself today to preview what the plan is going to look like for that area. So that same developer is working on a potential project on the Cumberland side, where that construction road is right now.
So something other than what was planned before?
Correct, because that, this, it all fell through with that white rock, the housing area.
Right.
I think that they'll end up maybe letting, I don't know what they're going to do with that road extension that was approved. They have two years to do it. I think that it will just end up being a larger amended subdivision plan with what, you know, more houses, maybe commercial. So the, they're, the plan is in the works to have something, you know.
So this vet clinic, will it, will its entrance be through that extension? Or they just want to utilize it as a construction access?
Just want to use it, use it as a construction access for now. They're building an entrance off of Route 1 on the Falmouth side, directly into the vet office.
What is the opinion of the, I mean, that Skyview Drive is like Dracula. I mean, that rises up and bites us about once a year. I don't know if you've ever been involved down there, but we've, we've been, that thing has had more twists and turns than some of those roads in Nepal I've been on. So how, what is the opinion of the town staff on this as far as, is that going to screw up the potential development?
No, no. In terms of just using the road right now?
Well, if all of a sudden they come up with a project that it looks like can get going, let's say, within six months, and they've got this road going through it.
Yeah, it's, it's the same developer. So.
He owns the other side.
Yeah, yeah. The, the, the ownership is the same on the Falmouth side and the Cumberland side. Yeah, so it's, so it's part of their sort of master plan. I, I mean, we're happy to, I mean, I'm happy to work with them to get a more formal sort of site plan, but I, you know, just kind of wanted to, I can also think it's appropriate for me to run it as a de minimis change that's required for construction and won't exist, you know, in a year.
So what about any concerns with the businesses that currently exist? Because I know when the, I forgot the name of the business, but the concrete business, and when they were running some of their trucks.
Oh, yeah.
Along the backside of one of the buildings there, there were some concerns made about that. So now we're just having similar construction traffic, but going straight up. I mean, I don't, I don't know how, how, what sort of public opportunity needs to be made to alert the folks there that we'd be allowing that.
Lorraine's right, there's a business.
Yeah.
You remember when we were going through the approval that, you know, we did work on buffering that business, it was on the corner. So I would think they should at least be notified on this thing if we're going to do it.
Yeah, and it's, you said, the same developer that owns the vet, the property for the vet clinic, and then potential for revised development. But construction traffic is a different animal entirely.
I guess, I guess the one thing that maybe we should probably do for the public is this, can we put this up on the projector, like an aerial map, like go to Bing or MapQuest or? I'm just trying to visualize it myself, but.
How about, how about, I'm going to understand this as we would like to see a site plan amendment, and then we can publicly notify it.
Right.
And do the things that we're supposed to do.
Okay.
I, I sort of wanted to get the feeling from the board on a staff review or a board review, and it sounds like a board review.
Yeah, because we're dealing with neighbors and construction noise.
Sure.
And true spring will, true spring, is it true spring across the street? I mean, that'll be like the swallows coming back to Capistrano.
Sure.
They're going to be, they're, you know, the usual suspects will, will show up. Okay, so that, that probably should be a board thing and not a de minimis change. And what else?
Got it. That's it. Go home.
Okay, I will, so basically then we have, that might be a possibility for February, but certainly March?
Um, yeah, I'll talk to them and see what they want to do.
Okay. So I would say if that school thing goes on, prepare for, you know, it'll be, we'll be there for a while.
Yeah, and right now, that's the only thing I see, and there's a week left for applications.
Okay. So we'll, we'll deal with the school. Okay, well, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
A second? Seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, and thank you, everybody. All right.